Yeah, it would have been a lot better if we could have had this information out to the schools in June.
It would be better if we knew that this program was going to go on for like the next three to four years and I could count on it and I could start at second semester and know that it's going to be with me. But if I'm going to put a lot of time, effort, and energy into any program and it's only going to be there for basically second semester, I'm thinking, why would I do that? Steve Roberts?
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to move that we do not authorize the Commissioner of Education to enter into a contract, that we do not take the recommendation of the Procurement Negotiating Committee at this time.
Is that a second, Mr. Willard? Seconded by Mr. Willard. Okay, discussion. The motion that is before us has other consequences. Oh, I'm sorry, Sally? Sally Cobble?
I know. I'm trying to think of how I want to word this. Mr. Chairman, you hit on a lot of my thoughts. It's my understanding that the responsibility of the State School Board is to set standards, and we have never before gone into recommending or voting for curriculum. It is my understanding that the Legislature is responsible for the funding of education and that it's the responsibility of the local school boards to -- I don't care whether there's monies involved or not. It's the responsibility of the local school boards to use their curriculum, to find their own curriculum. And I guess through this whole process, I think that I want to respect the jobs of each group, the Legislature, the State School Board, and the local school board. And I'm finding I cannot vote one way or the other on this bid process. I think you should know that, that it goes against what I signed up to do and what I pledged that I would do.
Steve Roberts? Did you already go? Okay. Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe -- I agree with Sally. I do not believe we should vote on this at all. I think we should, if I would make a motion, I'd make a motion, we go to the next agenda item.
Well, we have -- I hear what you're saying.
I do not believe we need to vote on this because I think there could be ramifications if we do vote on this. And so therefore, because I don't want to reject the bidder's bid, I don't want to reject bids, I don't want to do any of that, I just simply want to do nothing.
Okay. I do want to go one step further in my scenario before we address that, because even any intervention, delayed or otherwise, is still a good intervention. You know, even if this was to come out in January, by the time you got your school organized for it and got it to students, if it's a good program, it will service students well, you know, for that period. We know that long and sustained would be much better. We've been -- I think, and Dale, you can help me with this. I think we have approved different types of programs, you know, to be available to schools funded through the Legislature or someone else in the past. You know, we have done that, I believe.
Usually what happens when you get an appropriation, and there's not a specific formula, but we have the dollars, we have an independent committee that will recommend how to, what to do, they'll make applications and grants, and then you'll approve the grants. You've done that on many occasions. What made this one unique is it's an RFP, you have to request for proposals. That is unique to this board. The school districts have the option regardless.
The option to participate or not to participate.
And there may be some that's kind of different, and even those that have bid on it, and they're happy with that, and they're doing that.
Regrettably, in times of short funding, any dollar is a good dollar, and $2.1 million, you know. Ken Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go on the record as saying that while I don't support this recommendation, I fully, every member around this horseshoe knows that I have long supported the idea of individualized learning, and I still support that. Legislature's desire to affect that by this action that they're asking us to take. But as an elected official, I cannot in good conscience vote to sign a contract about which I know virtually nothing. There's been no information provided to us about the fidelity of the program, about its results in other places it's been used, about its results having been used in Kansas. We don't have any of that information. And so, but I'm being asked to authorize the Commissioner to sign a contract with the vendor about which we've been provided no information. Now, that may work in a scenario where you're not elected, but I can't do it on that basis alone. This has nothing to do with my lack of support for the Legislature's desire to move us forward and to create, help us to create an environment where individualized learning is a reality. But I just feel that this is the wrong way to go about it, and I don't know what the results of not supporting it are going to be, but I just don't think I have any choice but to not support this recommendation that's come to us.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This may be a question for Dale or Randy, I don't know who. The previous two-year reading program was done by statute, and it was how much money?
I think it started out at $6 million, I believe, and they designated the company in the proviso, in an appropriation bill, and the money was given to Division of Children and Families. I think they signed the contract.
And it was not an RFP?
No, it was not.
Okay.
This time, they, after two years, they gave it to the board to choose $2.1 million for one year and to do an RFP, which is outlined in the statute.
Okay. I'm still really struggling with the fact, and I go back to the local control that Sally mentioned, and I think Janet mentioned too. You know, I think local districts know their school and their children best, and if this money is available, those schools ought to be able to select what intervention works for them. I don't think we should be doing that. I think that should be, we talk about local control in this state, and then we turn our tail and we don't do it. I think this should be a local control decision, and those school districts know what works best. Some of them like one system, maybe what's been in place, but some of them might like another system. It seems like to me that's what makes sense. I don't know how we deal with that. We do have a proposal in front of us, and I hate to not, hate to turn money down. Our schools are strapped for cash right now, and it's a very difficult situation. But the local control piece, to me, is huge, and I don't think we should be deciding their curriculum. We decide standards, but I don't think we should be deciding their curriculum or which intervention they use.
Mr. Roberts, could I have your, or I guess from Peggy, the motion on the floor? Can I have that reread to us, please?
That we do not authorize the Commissioner and do not take the recommendation of the Procurement Negotiating Committee at this time for a reading intervention process. If you fill out the rest of that.
Okay.
I will substitute the motion that we move to the next agenda item.
I mean, procedurally, I think the motion is going to either be amended at the discretion of the mover, but the board chair isn't going to be able to just jump to the next agenda item.
I don't think that's a real, that's a good substitute. Okay. Yes, well, we, I went through a training on that, and it's kind of, but Sally Cobble?
I didn't say that.
You, I, no?
My comment would be for after we vote that motion up again.
Steve Roberts' motion?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, no, no.
No, not yours.
I don't think yours was accepted. I just have a motion, a comment I would like to move after we.
After we vote.
As a suggestion.
Okay. Deana Horst?
Thank you. So since there's been an RFP, we really cannot say that we would suggest that it be up to the local districts who uses it, how they use it.
The attorney said that's a, the answer, that's no based on the law. Why don't we do it anyway?
Speaking as a true superintendent.
I know we can't change the legislation, but how it was written.
It was written that we have to do an RFP.
Okay.
Yes.
So it couldn't be several RFPs? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I did send you a link to the statute that was approved. I mean, it's very, very specific. It does have language that says, "They appropriated the money shall be made from this account to issue a request for proposal to provide a statewide Kansas reading success program," and it goes on and has a number of stipulations. So you're not required to authorize the Commissioner to move forward, but if that is approved, the payment of that money is going to have to be consistent with the statutory language.
Okay. Carolyn?
Thank you. And I don't know exactly what I want to say, but my, and I probably just giving out my opinion, but we have school districts that have used Laxia, whatever, and it was, and so my thought is, so now these school districts will either have to switch if they want to attempt to get some money. And I think some of the districts, I've been told, had like, had really, had been, felt it was successful and had, you know, long-term plans for it. So I just wanted to share that, that I think it's most unfortunate that there's some kind of way those districts couldn't apply for this, some of these funds.
Okay. I have a question on the motion. The motion as presented would basically tell the Commissioner not to do anything.
I agree.
But maybe another motion.
I just want to be clear when we, it just, we're not going to do anything.
Well, you're not going to do anything on this motion.
On this motion, yes.
If this motion passes, I mean, you could do something different down the road, but according to this motion, I would interpret that to just say that this board is not giving the Commissioner authority to proceed with that contract negotiation and signing.
That's my understanding as well.
Scott? If that was to pass, what is our, what is our next step? Because obviously, there's a process to be followed here if this happens. Probably doesn't happen very often.
I would suggest the next step is you give the agency directive as to what you want, what the board wants the Commissioner to do.
That was going to be my next.
Assuming you want the Commissioner and the Department of Education to do something to fulfill the mandate of this bill, rather than playing guessing games as to what the State Board would want, I would, I would ask, because I'm the one negotiating the contract, some direction as to who or what do you want the Commissioner to do?
Correct. But my, specifically, I was looking for, we do nothing, we don't negotiate with them because we won't, so we send a nice note over to the Department Administration and say, "Thanks, but no thanks."
No, we don't. I would suggest we wouldn't send any message until we, you don't send a message to another agency saying, "We haven't done anything." We'd wait until there was some action taken by the board, and the motion by Mr. Roberts is an inaction, it's not an action.
Right, that's what I.
You asked what the next step is. I don't know. I would ask you what the next step is.
Okay, that's fair enough. Thank you very much, that clarifies it for me. Okay, Sally Cobble, and then we're going to.
Well, I was going to make a motion after the next one on what to do about that inaction. That was what I was going to do.
Okay. Ken Willard?
Well, I'm just trying to digest what Scott has just told us. It seems to me that we've been asked to do something we can't do, or we're not willing to do. Is it really our place to take the initiative and say what we are willing to do, or is it to just, I mean, I'm just not sure about that.
Well, we'll know in a moment, after we do the first vote.
Okay.
Okay. I'm being dead serious with this, because I'm not sure what the next step is after. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Could you, Peggy, read the motion again?
Do not authorize Commissioner and to not take recommendation of the Procurement Negotiating Committee at this time for reading intervention process.
So I would call for, and the motion was by Steve Roberts and seconded by Ken Willard. Yes, Ken?
Just a question, is voting for this motion the same as voting no on the motion that was before us? That was the recommended motion?
No, this is, this is voting only on this motion. That was a recommended motion from, that we can modify, that was just recommended by the department. Okay, that is not a motion that's been made. Okay, that was only a recommended motion. Okay. All those in favor of the motion as presented, raise your right hand. Three, those opposed? Deana, is that a yes or a no? One, two, three, four abstains? Two. Well, we don't have six, so we're not going anywhere with that, rascal. Okay, let's get the vote correct, though, Peggy?
Okay, so I have three yeses, four noes, or Janet, Deana, Carolyn, and Kathy, and two abstentions, and Jim Porter and Sally.
Right.
So our three yeses were Jim McNeese, Ken, and Steve.
Well, now, obviously, the motion failed, okay, as presented. Sally Cobble?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend that we ask those that were so graciously giving the money for the RFP, if they would be willing for us to distribute that through a grant process.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is you don't like the law. But you have a law that very clearly spells out a criteria, and you can't change the law. Well, they do. Well, I know, but.
Well, they can.
They wrote it in the law. You have, you have a law that spelled it out, so I know you don't. Well, they don't follow their laws.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ken?
That's the reason I asked the question that I did before we took, before we voted. The law says this is what we're to do, and that's approve, give the Commissioner authority to sign this contract agreed upon by the Procurement Committee. So I don't think, I don't know what else we can do if we decide that we can't do that. So I mean, but what Sally was trying to do was do what Scott said that we would have to do, that we ought to do, and that's provide an alternative, but I don't know where that fits in within the law.
It doesn't.
Okay. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, the law is specific. It doesn't say that who you have to award the money to, it just says a RFP process. The last sentence, it's pretty, it's a one-page statute, and the very last sentence says, "And provided further to ensure effective implementation of the program in conjunction with the beginning of the academic school year, the Department of Education shall announce and implement the program no later than August 15, 2015." The process has been explained to the board in terms of the appropriation and the signature by, to make this law effective, and the time that's necessary to go through the RFP process has made that impossible to carry out by August 15. I would, I would concur with the Commissioner, if you don't, you can't change the language of the law, you're not required to approve it. There may be some slight wiggle room in terms of what you direct the agency to do, in terms of going back to the Department of Administration, but I don't think motions that change the basic parameters of the statutory authority would be a very wise choice because you would not be complying with the law.
If we do not follow through with the motion as presented, we had the motion that failed, the motion as presented, are we in some way, and I don't know the answer to this, in some way shirking our responsibility or in some way doing something that, the state, obviously the Legislature and the governor want to give the state $2.1 million for a reading success program, which is a reading intervention program that districts can apply for at their will. They don't have to, and if there was money left at the end of this time, we approve this and nobody applies, and there's $2.1 million left, or whatever amount, you know, and then it just swept up into the budget at the end of the year. Is that correct?
We'd be in compliance with the law, the money would lapse.
Well, even if, it could be that we, number one scenario is that we, in fact, do approve the recommended motion, and Dr. Watson goes into negotiations with them, we come out of the negotiations with vendor A, and they go out and they say to the school districts in the state of Kansas, "We'd like to do this," and nobody, or just a couple of them show up, and at the end of next year, there's $1.7 million still left, and we've complied with the law. Districts that had vendor A, B, or C, you know, they didn't get the thing in the past, they, they either dropped their program or they found money within their budget to do it.
We didn't spend all, the two-year program, we didn't spend all that money, and whatever's left over was swept. That's true, and it'd probably be the same here. Now, what they may do with it, that remains to be seen.
But there's no compliance on the part of districts within the state to accept the recommended vendor, they just can't work with the other vendors.
You can't use that money.
Oh, no, no, they can work with them with their own money.
That's correct.
With their own money. They don't get the, they don't get the $2 million, they don't get the money from, from this pool of money. They could still, you know, go with whatever A, B, C vendor they wanted to, but the one that's going to be paid for by the state of Kansas, okay, and this $2.1 million is what we're authorizing here. We're saying we want vendor 10, you know, to be their, the one of choice for the $2 million. Okay? And if we authorize this, this recommendation, and basically, nobody asked, or they didn't all ask, the money would just be swept then into the general fund at the end of the year.
Well, that's, that's what occurred this year. I don't know if you could say what's going to occur, the legislature could do with what they. Yeah, they could extend it for another year, for example. Whatever's left over, reappropriate it, spend it next year.
With a new set of rules.
Yeah, sure.
At their, at their, at their will and when.
Maybe after the legislature decides where they sweep it, reappropriate it, add to it, that's their call.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the only thing we could say with certainty is that we, we couldn't spend that money.
We cannot spend.
In some way, and we wouldn't be authorized to spend it because it wouldn't be consistent with the statute. What the Legislature does.
Yes, it's their business. Kathy Bush?
I'm going to make a comment, then I'm going to make a motion. My first comment is that I truly believe this money should be able to be spent for local districts to decide. That being said, I understand the constraints we are under, and I'm going to move that we take the recommended action.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, take the recommended action, which is to authorize the Commissioner of Education enter into contract as recommended by the Procurement Negotiating Committee for the purpose of providing a reading intervention process for all students in Kansas with a contract amount not to exceed $2.1 million. Do I have a second? I'm going to second it. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Deana? I'm sorry.
I will probably support this, but I also believe that this is a local control issue. And actually, if you look at it, it is local control because it's offered to them. If they don't want to use it, they don't have to. The concern I have is that we're picking one program, and, and I concur with, with what Ken had said, we don't really have as much information as we, as we need to make such a decision on our own. However, we did have a representative who represented us, and I think that one of the things that we need to do is recommend to the Legislature in the future that they use this kind of money as a, in a grant program instead, because that's really what we're saying. So I will support the motion. I may be, will probably be on the losing end of it, but I think it was, the PNC Committee did this recommendation in good faith, and I think we ought to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will not be supporting the motion for the reasons that Deana just elucidated. No, I mean, as an elected official, you know, I have to represent the public in a greater fashion than what I'm being asked to today. So respectfully, I will not be supporting the motion.
I understand where you're coming from, and this is not an argument, but we've been, I feel I've been placed in a no-win scenario. At, at the whim of others. Jim Porter?
Yeah, I think we're in a no-win situation to get them, for what, based on what both Kathy and Deana said, I'm probably going to, and I'm not sure, but I'm probably very reluctantly going to support this.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much for the input. Oh, Carolyn?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Well, out of respect for Kathy and her service on the review, no, I can respect you for what you've done. I'm so disappointed because I'm so sad for the school districts that have started a reading program, and now if they want to continue to, to help their students be successful, then they're going to have to maybe drop, lose, you know, what gains they've already made with the programs they're using to, to apply for this. So I, I'm like Mr. Porter, I think I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Ken Willard?
Mr. Chairman, a vote no on this motion is in no way intended to be disrespectful of my colleague to the right. I think she was in a no-win position herself. And I'm, I'm going to vote no because I just simply don't have the information that I need to vote on a program that's going to be thrown out there for everybody to use. And I'm going to vote no, in the hopes that there will be some opportunities to visit with people across the street to talk about an alternative way of using that money for assistance to kids who need it, interventions, in, in some other way. But I'm just in a position that I cannot see my way out of. I just can't see how a vote for this is possible. So I, I will be voting no, but it has nothing to do with disrespect for Kathy.
Understood. This is, is one of the most distasteful votes that I've been asked to make. So I fully concur with Kathy and what she said, that, that it's about local control. You change just a little bit of this to where districts could make a choice between a set of approved vendors, which we've done before, you know, a series, that would, that would be fine. I will go back, though, also two years ago when this legislation was first passed and a vendor was selected without being vetted, and I remember that, and I, I remember, you know, it, it, it should be open and should be, people allowed to do that. Well, now I've got that choice, and I don't like it, you know, because it seems that by the circumstances of time and the circumstances of choice, that we're hurting kids in Kansas. Because there are programs that are working, that, that vendor will probably not be the, one of the, be the approved vendor. And then we're instituting a, a, clearly, if, if, if it does go through, and Randy finally signs it, and this vendor comes in, it could be the best vendor in the world, and, and you're not going to get a return on six months, and it's going to be second semester before anybody gets out there. But on the other hand, as I said, too, to lose that money, loses six months of at least some intervention. I don't know, it's just a very distasteful vote. I'm sure I didn't help anybody with their vote. You know, I just wanted to vent my frustration, if you will. Okay. Janet Waugh?
I'm sitting here just absolutely, I have, I have no clue what I'm going to do. I believe 100% in local control, you know, and I don't, but I can't vote against this vendor because I feel it has been vetted, you know? I mean, I think they've done the right thing. I'm not anti this vendor.
Yeah.
You know, absolutely not.
It's not the vendor.
It's not the vendor, you know, but I, I don't feel comfortable doing this. Maybe I will, and maybe I won't.
That's, that's good. So with, with that in mind, maybe I will, maybe I won't, we'll have a call for a question. We have the recommended motion made by Kathy Bush, seconded by me. All those in favor of accepting the recommended motion, please raise your right hand. I'll get this right. One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed, same sign. One, two. Steve Roberts and Ken Willard and abstain, one. We do not have six votes, so we do not have a, a motion that passed. So basically, we're not telling anybody to do anything. She can't remember.
She hasn't registered to vote.
Oh, you haven't voted? Well, you've got one of three. You're not getting out of this one, Kat.
So we flip a coin.
Okay, what? Okay. We're going to vote again. I'm sorry that I missed your vote the first time. You know, so to, to clarify things, we're going to six. All those opposed, same sign. Two. Abstain, one. So the, the recommended motion is that the Commissioner of Education, Randy, will enter into a contract negotiations with the recommended vendor, as recommended by the Procurement Negotiating Committee, and will report back to us on those recommendations and the processes that will be followed henceforth. Is that correct? Okay, let's take a quick break because Janet's already left, and we'll take five minutes and come back at 25 till six.
I may just follow up. Just, yes, I thought it was ready.
Finish our meeting. Okay, we're missing a couple of people. Yes, um, yes, yes, we do. Okay. Janet, Janet Waugh?
Yes.
Uh, any, many reports on board policy other than what you did and you did to me?
No, except once again, thank you to my, uh, policy committee. They did a wonderful job. I really appreciate it. Thank you to Mark and Peggy for all your help and assistance. And I think unless you guide, unless the board directs us in the future to tackle something else, we may be through.
That, the word maybe is, is, is a very powerful word. We'll see. But thank you for, thank you to the board and the policy, uh, team. Janet and, and who else was on? Kathy was on that and who else? Jim? Okay, thank you very much. And Peggy for all your work with that. And Mark. Um, yeah, and, and yes, it, it'll be a regular process, but you know, we've come really far on.
I honestly, I am pleased. I, you know, I've served on this committee several times and it seems like this year we were really, really thorough. I just really had a good committee. I mean, that we really, I think, not only did we get through the policies, we got through the guidelines. And so I felt we did it. I think the board, the polit, the committee was really, I had a very strong committee.
Okay, um, communication team. Sally, I don't think we have anything to report right now. Do you have anything?
No, but has people sent in their ideas to Penny yet on?
People.
Businesses they might want to invite on October 27th.
Right. If you have names of people within your community that you feel would be, um, advantageous to have them in Wichita for our presentation of our vision on October 27th. If you'd send those names to Penny, that would be great. Okay. Um, Jim, anything more to add on the ESI task force? Okay, Kathy, anything on the NASB leadership stipend? We have an event coming up on Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, we're at Kelly. Peggy's got in the packet, looks like our parking permit. So those of you that are going, that's in there as well as a map. With even little arrows on where we're, how we're supposed to get there. So I'm sure we won't get lost. So yeah, that's on Thursday and looking forward to it. So that should be a great, great activity to be there with the, with the, some of the new superintendents.
Well, there's principals there as well.
Okay.
Yes, and, and there's probably going to be about 25 mentors as well. There's 118, 920 people gonna be there, yes. Including the, the Kansas State University folks and the, the Kelly Board of Directors. This is a, and, and I realize that we can't all be there and to those of you who are not going to be able to be there, I'm, I'm sorry you're not going to be there, but we all, we understand it's, it's extra time and duty and we have certainly a lot of time here. But, um, to the administrators of the state, uh, this has been a, a, just a real shot in the arm for them to, to have our attention and to be willing to be listening partners in their events and activities and getting to know them. I, I can't, I'm sure there's many of you could give testimony to the, the positive feedback as well. I would also add that at the NASB conference later this month, Kathy and I will be attending a, um, sessions, um, on the, on the pre-conference day. Where we'll meet with other, um, stipend folks who are in the leadership stipend from around the country. I can't remember the states' names right now. But there's probably seven or eight, nine of those that are out there doing, and we're going to be meeting to share experiences. Ours was one of the more unique, uh, presentation or, or, um, grant applications. So they're looking forward to us being there. And thank you for, for attending Kathy. Um, and we'll be able to bring back more information about what other states are doing and learn from them as well. So I think that's a, a good deal and we'll move right on. Legislative report. Ken, Dina, anything?
Nope.
The only thing is that there has been a committee appointed to start working on the school finance. But, uh, other than that.
I, I think, are you referring to?
I don't know who's, who all's on it.
Is that Merrick's?
Actually.
There are, there is a list of who some of them are, but I don't know who all of them are.
But I, I was called into a meeting a couple of weeks ago at the governor's office with a handful of superintendents. To talk about the kinds of things that we wanted, that we thought ought to be in the formula, the things that ought to be, they ought to accomplish, I guess. It was rather a brief meeting and there were no details put to it at all, nothing in writing or anything. So then the committee was selected. So I don't know who's on the committee at this point.
I don't know that it's a complete committee yet.
Yeah, I think you're right.
All I know is what I've read in the press and as we all know, that can be a little slanted one way or the other. But, um, it seems that, that committee was opening up a whole other number of things related to even some of the issues that we've been talking about, about where we want to go with education. What's, what isn't suitable education?
True.
You know?
It's the House and Senate Education Committee Chairs and, uh, also the ranking members. And, uh, also ways and means and, and appropriations. And then there's some others that hadn't been appointed yet, so.
Yes. Okay. Okay, well, our work about us tomorrow will be a big part of hopefully where we're going. Okay, and let's see, Board Attorney Report.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would, uh, report on three different cases, um, that are either pending or, or active. Well, the first is on the, uh, COPE litigation that was filed in federal court. As you may recall, this COPE stands for the Citizens for Objective Public Education. The, this was a, a lawsuit filed by that entity and some individuals complaining about the board's approval of next generation science standards. That lawsuit is being defended by the Assistant Attorney General Dwight Carswell. It's, it named the board, the commissioner and the agency. Uh, it has, the favorable opinion was, was issued by the district court. In Kansas, federal district court, and it has been appealed to the, to the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Tenth Circuit. The oral argument is in Denver and on September 30th. Uh, I will circulate, uh, some of the briefs. So you just have them if, in case you want to read them, but no action or no significant developments other than to tell you that the, the board, um, attorney who's been appointed to represent that will be arguing the case in September. Scott Gordon is more closely monitoring that, but he's not attending the, uh, the hearing. As the Assistant Attorney General has that under control for, on behalf of, of, uh, of everyone here. You saw my, in my monthly board report, the Patrella matter, uh, has had some significant activity. That is the lawsuit that has been to the, to the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Tenth Circuit on two different occasions and has been recently remanded to, uh, to the District Court in Kansas Federal District Court. We've begun, uh, getting that case back up and running and are working on our motion for summary judgment. We've met with the plaintiff's counsel and had some, um, activity related to substitution of parties, getting the answer, uh, on behalf of the commissioner and the board on file. The court has moved the hearing back from September to October 26th. Most likely because the plaintiffs have indicated that they intend to amend the complaint, to, uh, update it. They want to stay the, the progress of the litigation pending the outcome of the Gannon case. And, uh, the defendants have indicated that they intend to file a motion for summary judgment. So when that's ultimately filed, I'll, I'll share the briefs, uh, with the, with the board. Uh, the third one is on the Gannon case, which we are just, um, kind of monitoring from afar. We did not ultimately, uh, get involved in that appeal, uh, but has, has been shared with you. Some deadlines have, have been established on the equity portion. Those briefs, uh, the first round of briefs on the equity issue were filed on September 2nd by all the parties. Those, uh, response briefs will be on October 2nd and the oral argument on the equity portion will be November 6th. And I'll circulate, uh, briefs as those come in. Uh, other than that, um, I would stand for questions.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mark. It's always good to have updates on our legal status and different venues. Okay, um, individual board member reports and requests for future agenda items. We start down with Kathy Bush.
Don't really have anything in, as a report. Um, I guess a question, I don't know that it's necessarily a future board agenda item, but we had the group that came and talked to us about recess. Not too long ago, and I wondered if we were going to have any follow-up on that. I felt like that, that's some pretty powerful information and maybe we need a little follow-up or a little discussion as far as the board's concerned on. I think there's a lot of merits as far as, uh, recess that's, is or is not in a number of our schools. So I didn't know if we needed some follow-up. So Tom and I don't know what the board thinks. So just, uh, it's of particular interest to me. I think it helps as far as some of those non-academic skills, so.
Okay. Uh, Ken?
I was just going to report, as I already did, on that meeting I was called about attending with the governor. That was an interesting discussion, but the, I, I guess, the gist of it was that money that is appropriated or in the formula for, success, guaranteeing success or whatever, be, be added additional money, be incentive money, not part of the formula. So in other words, you get kind of paid, uh, at the end if you've reached a certain amount of success. I don't think I stated that very, very well, but there, there was, there, there's, there's been a proposal, uh, that a portion of the funding would be based upon the number of students who were showing, uh, success after school. You know, enrolled, enrolled in college or completed a year of college or completed boot camp or what, those kinds of things. And the, uh, general discussion there, I think, was that that should not be a part of the formula, but could be, uh, incentive money that could, could be obtained on top of the, the basic formula. So, but it was a very general discussion and, uh, no more detail than that.
Well, there isn't a legislator that I've talked to in the last, uh, two months that hasn't either offered a solution or asked questions about a solution. And, um, it, it's, it's, that's the, the golden ring. That's the golden fleece right now.
Well, I think, I think the desire of most is to get the, well, they have two years to write a formula. I think the desire of most is to have it done in this coming year, done this year rather than next year.
All depends on who you talk to.
Well, I don't know if that's doable or not, but, uh.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, more to come on that.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Sally?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any report because I know my, I know Carolyn with the same meeting I have, and she's much better at reporting on those meetings. But I have a question of Ken. Ken, Education Commission of the States has a lot of research about states that have done incentive pay to school districts. And, um, I didn't know if there's any way that you could maybe, um, let them know that there's a lot of research out there for that. And, um, because it, it's quite controversial on, um, you reward the state, the schools might need more money to bring up those lower. And so, um, but there's a lot of good research on that out of the Education Commission of the States.
Thank you. There, one of the questions that came up actually in that meeting was, well, do we know what other states are doing?
Yeah.
You know, what's working for somebody else? And, and, and there has been some research that's gone on by the governor's people, but, um, we didn't get a lot of, any detail on it.
Well, and there's a guy that Education Commission of the States has hired just for school financing. And has all of that research. And he would come and give the both sides and all of that if they would so choose to want somebody to come in.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Carolyn?
Thank you. Well, um, Kansas Volunteer Commission, we met August the 13th in Kansas City, Kansas. And Wendy Spencer, who is the CEO for the Corporation for National and Community Service in Washington, DC. She was here, sat, visited with us, and then she came to the peak of the next day and we, at Harvesters, our food, uh, distribution center. We, um, packed, uh, food for senior citizens. And, um, then I had agreed to serve on an ad hoc committee. And so, uh, for us to establish the priorities that we saw that individually that we would like, you know, maybe to recommend to, um, for us to work on. And number one in the committee I was in was for veterans and military families. And then, uh, economic opportunity for youth, then rural and multi-focus intermediary. I do have it written out what that all stands for. I could read it to you, but, but anyway, mainly it was rural. Um, and then finally disaster services. And that was one of the things that Ms. Spencer, she was really stressing. For, to be one, excuse me, to be one of our goals is, if nothing else, for maybe us to establish all the different, um, services that could come together when, if we had one, rather than us just think, oh, there's a Red Cross, they'll take care of it. So that was, um, um, I'm enjoying, you know, that, uh, KASB summit. Most of us attended that. So I won't, uh, talk too much about that other than, uh, the concerns, some of the concerns that I wrote down was, of course, our student demographics and the loss, the discussion was the loss of waitings. And, um, equalization, equalization of state aid. And then our commissioner and I visited Chase Middle School and, um, there's just several, you know, it's very sad when you think about how our educators, they just working and working and struggling and struggling. We become the parents for, for a lot of these kids. And to try to help them so that they can be successful. There's a new principal there. He's so energetic. Then I went to, no, excuse me, Sally and I went to, what was it?
MTS.
Yep, that's, thank you. See, uh, in Wichita. And of course, I always enjoy listening to Dr. Randy Sprick. And, um, then Dr. Anita Archer. Uh, I, I enjoy her, whatever she, uh, presents. So that was my travels for the month. And I would like, please ma'am, for you to add the revisit on September the 16th at KASB for me. That's it.
Thank you. Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I attended an education roundtable for the Kansas Juvenile Justice System. Dale came with me. It was fascinating, you know? There, there are the legislators visiting, having, uh, committee meetings during the summer over the juvenile justice system. And we happened to be the education one. And it was very interesting the things that they're doing educationally, you know, for these students, uh, in the juvenile justice system, which in fact, at that time, reminded me that one of my goals that I remember years ago that I've never accomplished is visiting the facilities. I had visited Lansing, Benz, because we've got Educate 321 in the women's prison here in Topeka, uh, you know, and saw what they were doing. But I, I'd really neglected the juveniles. So I have made appointments to visit these three juvenile justice systems. The one here in Topeka is on September 23rd. That's the, kind of the big one, you might say, at 8:00 in the morning. And then also in Olathe, I'm going to visit on 9:15. That's a local, because we have the two loc, I'm going to two locals and then to the state one that's a longer term. And then on, on, uh, September 17th, I'm visiting in Wyandotte County. And, uh, I would invite any of you who would like to attend with me to please let me know, because Carolyn has already told me she will be going to the one in Topeka. Because I need to give them names, you know, before we go, so they can be aware who's going to attend, I guess, the background of us or something. I don't know. So anyway, I'm kind of anxious to do this. Maybe they won't let us out, who knows? But I had a really busy month. Randy and I, I think we're together a whole lot. Uh, we went to a Turner, Turner staff development. That's my home district. Oak Grove's my home district. We had a new school opening. That was very exciting. That school needed to be replaced. It was really bad. And, uh, I also, uh, we also, when he came to Kansas City, that was a wonderful tour. I was very pleased with what we went to the three facilities, early childhood and elementary and Wyandotte High School. And the thing at Wyandotte High School that kind of stuck out at me, we enjoyed visiting with the students. That was a big part, you know, but, uh, at the end, Randy asked him, he says, what can we do for you students? And one, or I think, no, I think Cindy asked that question. Cindy Lane asked, what could, what can they do for the, you students that are here? And one young man popped up and says, take care of us. And Randy said, you know, that really means something. So I think we need to remember that. That's what we need to be doing. We, we need to take care of these kids, you know, and, uh, and, uh, and they're doing some wonderful things there. It's very low socioeconomic, but they're doing a wonderful thing. I also went to Blue Valley. My daughter's neighbor teaches in their CAPS pro, teacher ed program, and I spoke to them morning and afternoon. So there are some future teachers out there and that was kind of fun. And I must thank Peggy immensely for helping me with that. She did a PowerPoint for me, you know? And then, uh, the, I had, I visited a lot of schools and all those things. But the other thing that I had, I received an email last night from a friend of mine, Dr. Jim Hawes. Dr. Hawes is a former principal in the Turner District. He's retired. And he now, uh, teaches at one of our universities part-time, but he also writes, uh, articles for the local newspaper. It's a weekly newspaper. And he sent me this that's going to come out this week and he asked me to share it with the board. So anyway, for your, when you have nothing to do, you might want to sit there and read all this. You know, I thought, I appreciated it. He thought we might be interested. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yes?
I could like to make
Yes.
A comment about this budget. Uh, I know this is difficult and I know several people will be exceeding their budgets, you know, and, and I know Jim talked about that today. And so I know it's hard. But I just found out, I just got an email. I've kind of been reading my emails when we have a little roll in the meeting. Not that we would have that, but I, I, I received an email from KASB that, uh, about the
Invitation.
Invitation to attend. It's going to cost us 40 bucks if we stay for lunch. Just thought you might want to know.
No snide comments. Okay, but yes, Jim, thank you very much. That, that, and, and yes, we are being asked to do more, you know, the, the meeting assignments or committee assignments and opportunities to represent are, are, are becoming more numerous in these times. We'll, we'll order a pizza. Okay, moving along.
Can I double check those dates with Jim? I have 9/21, 9/29, and 10/20.
Dina?
Well, um, KASB conference on school finances was very interesting. We not only had interesting presenters, uh, we were divided up into tables, for those of you who didn't go. Tables that had board members, legislators, um, principals, superintendents. At my table, I happen to have the Appropriations Chair. And, uh, he listened very carefully to many board members and, uh, and the superintendents that were sitting, um, sitting there with us and was very congenial. Had some good comments. So hopefully he learned some things from, of their difficulties, listening to them. And one of the things I found very interesting, KSV in their research had determined some peer states. And, um, I was rather shocked as to who they And I was rather shocked as to who they are. Oregon, Washington, Illinois, Michigan, Nebraska, Wisconsin. That didn't surprise me quite as much because Oregon and Washington have rural components to those states. And Illinois, Michigan, Nebraska, Wisconsin are part of the Midwest legislative states that I've always dealt with anyway. But they added Pennsylvania. And I thought that was kind of a little bit of a shock, how Pennsylvania got into kind of a rural area. But I do know they do have some rural areas in Pennsylvania, but it still was surprising to have something from the East Coast brought in. And there are some documents that if some of you did not go, that were shared with us, that I think would be helpful for you to, to also read. So, and the only thing that I would like to request is that I would agree that the recess component, it would be good to follow up a little more on that. But I also think that we have a number of, of subject areas that I think it would be neat to find out what kind of great things school districts, different teachers are doing with their students. So I'd like to start hearing, not just from the award winners, but from the rank and file individuals, what are they doing in their schools for in the arts, in social studies, in, in math, in science? Just knowing a little more about what's going on across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at the PDK Gallup poll, it's been referenced a couple of times today. If it would please the board, I'd like to send the link to Peggy and have her, have her send it out. It's just a website here where you can download the poll report. It's pretty interesting reading. Testing doesn't measure up for Americans. Testing lacks public support. Common core out of favor. Americans endorse choice. They draw a nice distinction between choice and vouchers. Nice piece here on get the kids vaccinated. So a lot of good reading here, I'd like to send it out. Americans prefer state control, not federal. I think it's worth your time. So I would like to, without violating any protocol, send the link to Peggy so she could distribute it, if I could do that. I was privileged to accept employment at the Kickapoo Nation School in Powhatan. So I've been there a month. In fact, I started the very day after the last time we met. It's, it's a challenging situation, but it's one I'm falling in love with. I don't think I'm overstating it. Secondary math and science is my subject. I have 20 students total, six middle school and 14 in nine through 12. Some of the kids have very limited math skills, extremely limited. So it's, it's a challenge. As I was downloading the NGSS standards to see just what I should be doing for seven through 12, science, in terms of physical science, I was taken with the fact that our NGSS standards here in Kansas still say that they are proprietary to achieve incorporated, all rights reserved, copyright 2013. And if someone told me that it was going to be that way for seven years until we revisit the standards, then I don't remember that. And if I was informed of that, I apologize. But I think it's something that we should address. Because one of the reasons I voted for those standards is I was assured that we owned them. And the fact that the standards themselves say copyright 2013, achieve incorporated, all rights reserved, I think the average citizen reading that would say, doesn't look like the state of Kansas owns them. So I think that's something we should visit. I look forward to tomorrow's visit for Vision. I think we're going to have some lively discussions. I think Jim Porter and I, left to our own vices, our own devices, we could probably solve about 85%, don't you think, Jim? You and I were just locked in a room for an eight, maybe 80? I think we'll have some solutions tomorrow, thinking out of the box. You know, one of the things I like to do, and I want to thank Dr. Watson for, for meeting with, with us individually. You know, I mentioned, you know, one of my goals is to stop labeling children by race. And if I could paraphrase Dr. Watson, he said, well, let's just stop labeling children in a variety of ways. I think that's, that was your accurate response. And maybe that's what we should do. But I think we need to think out of the box on, on things as fundamental, as whether or not teaching really is fundamentally union work, whether or not we should continue to label children by race. I think we have some big issues and I think we are right to think that, that this is the time between federal laws and between testing regimes, that this is the time to really make some, some headway. So not only do I, I love the little school where I'm working, I've, I love being a part of this board. And I think we'll have some solutions tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you. The chairman's report, we have the Teacher of the Year banquet's coming up back this weekend. And I regret that I will not be able to attend the one in Wichita. I'm very sorry about that, but I have a family commitment that I need to be with and I will be there in November. Well, we got to get a better date. But I will be there. The KSB summit was very good. Thank you, Dina. It was an excellent report. It was good to be able to listen to others. Having a legislator, a superintendent, a local board member and a state board member in my case at my table, brought different perspectives and the smart people did a lot of listening. Was just going to take all of us together to, to solve that problem, I think. And I appreciate the leadership that KSB did. I want to thank the board for today's assessment discussion, the cut scores, the assessments. It's going to get a big play in the press and I think we've done a very good job. Denise, thank you for your pre-work on, and Randy, for all that you guys did, because we had, we had good questions in the press section, more probing questions, harder questions. But that showed that they, they were prepared. We would have gotten, I think, more coarse and, and less thoughtful questions and more, why'd you do that, questions, you know, I don't know how to say it. You know, they, they felt like they, they were ready for it and they, they were good. The press did a good job. Now let's see what, what happens after that. But you did a good job, thank you. I know there's probably groups out there that say, they didn't talk to me. Well, you know, that's probably one way, right? And another way, we haven't kept this a secret. It's been out in front of the public for a long time. But I still am concerned and we need to track how the assessments play out in the school districts with the, with the local boards, assessment coordinators, superintendents and administrators. I'm going to be in Clearwater in the next week. We're going to have to meet with assessment coordinators and I've been invited to another one in South Central Kansas to, with other assessment folks, because they're the ones that, you know, have the, the front line of explaining it to superintendents, boards and teachers and, and students. And it is a huge shift. We've been living it, you know, for the last, you know, two years. For some, it's going to be their first, you know, wow, that really did change. You know, and we're at different stages of that change process and accepting that change. And we're going to have to be very patient with a lot of people out there in the field as we, as we move forward. I would hope that all of you would be getting questions from your local school districts about the assessments and the assessment results and the cut scores. We need to have that conversation, not to be asking us, as I think, scarier than getting questions. You know, so if they're not asking you, I'd invite you to, to communicate with the, the school districts in your district. I also want to thank you for the conversation, and I know none of us feel good about it, the reading for success, you know, this afternoon. I, I keep telling people that, that the board is an excellent board. We had an excellent discussion. We were, we, we, we had a lot of emotional connection to it for, from many different places, but the emotion was ours and emotion motivated us, but it didn't turn us against each other. You know, and that's really important. So I do want to commend you again for an excellent and very tough discussion. I'm sure we'll be back with more on that later. Coming up is the NASB conference. And at that conference, we've identified our delegate for the delegate assembly and the voting on the, the president-elect. And we've given that responsibility to Carolyn and she'll do a great job. But we also have in our packet, the NASB bylaw changes that will be also voted on at the delegate assembly when we meet in Baltimore. And those are there and they're, they're highlighted, the changes. And I hope that you will read those questions next month, we're going to vote on those as a board. Do we accept the recommendations? You know, at NASB, if you have any concerns, this would be a good time, you can contact, you know, Ken or I. We've been there at the meetings for, for this. So if you have questions, that would be good, but we'll be voting on them at the next meeting right before we go to Baltimore. You know, so to give Carolyn our directions on, on the bylaws. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting at the KNEA offices. We begin at 9:00 AM. The building doesn't open till 8:30. So don't get real excited and be there by eight.
Sally wanted to camp out. We told her she couldn't be there.
Where is their office?
It's right down the street, across from, right across from Topeka High, KNEA building. Park in the back and go in that kind of backside door. And it, they'll, they'll make sure you get there. Dress is informal or, you know, come relaxed. We have a long day before us, but a good day. I'm excited about the opportunity and who is it, which one of the KSB folks is Doug?
Doug Meckel.
Doug Meckel is going to be there to facilitate. You know, it, it, it's a good day. Thursday, we're in Manhattan at the K-State Alumni Center on the first floor conference room. And it's been told several times, we have parking passes, which I will make sure I take myself right now. Lunch is provided and it's not $40. We should conclude, as anticipated by 2:30. You've already received kind of an agenda of the activities. And though they might not particularly focus on us, I think it gives us a better understanding of what administrators are facing in their districts and running schools, you know, and gives us a kind of a primer on what makes a good, a good administrator, you know, things that they have to know and be able to do themselves. And we'll also be, I do want to lurch, there's a, there's a real strong group of retired administrators who are mentoring these others and they have groups of them and they'll be there as well, you know. And they're a real great resource for us as well, you know. So I hope we do a lot of networking, learn a lot and, and certainly build relationships with the new administrators who are going to be leading our school districts, many of these for many years. So good time to get to know them in a relaxed situation like that and be a learner with Otherwise, any last words, anything, any other travel for Peggy? Ken?
Peggy, I need to have, add the KTOY regional in Wichita that afternoon.
We already had you down for that.
Okay, all right. All right. And what is the, what is the time and location of the October 27th meeting? Do we have that?
Yes, it's the, the October 27th is the first day of the Fall Conference, KSDE Fall Conference.
Oh, it's at the conference, okay. Gotcha.
And that'll be the presentation.
That's the Hyatt.
Okay.
The Hyatt. Very first thing will be National Teacher of the Year. And then there'll be a slight break and then we'll, we'll have our presentation right after.
I just didn't have it on my calendar.
Is that around nine or is that more around eight?
Nine. It's more around 10, isn't it?
9:30.
It's a 7:30. I think it's a 9:30. Nine?
Okay.
Well, I really can't sleep at 8:00.
We're going to, I guess we're recessing right now and we'll reconvene.
We need to vote.
Oh, board travel, thank you very much. Moved and moved by Jim Porter, seconded by Deana Horst to approve board travel as, as altered, changed and presented.
I'm sorry, miss.
Here it is. Jim Porter and then seconded by Deana Horst to approve the board travel as presented, amended and, okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes nine, zero.
I was very definitive with that.
I did. Please record that Janet Waugh was very definitive, she's changed her. Thank you very much. It's been a long day. We've got a very important day tomorrow. The Acheweeeties. Okay, thank you.
When I met with John Prohman, he said, yeah, so we're going to incorporate tax actions. And we thought he could get a result. And if not, he wouldn't. So that's the reason, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Are you going to be coming out with us or?
I need to get ready for the fall.
Okay, yeah, that's, I'm all for it, I just have to drink beer. I have to keep Jim Porter in town.
Do you drink beer?
Only when I'm forced to by others.
I love it. And he turned his, okay. See, I don't, I don't, I don't do my emails and stuff like some people do during meetings. But I just found out I needed to put something on travel. But I might have told her before.
I don't know. Ask Kathy where she wants to go.